Good afternoon. By my watch, it is 2:00 and we will get the public hearing started. Thank you all so much for being here. My name is Tess Stovall and as the Executive Director of the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission, I will be presiding at today's hearing. Tennessee Code Annotated 4913108 allows a charter school whose amended application has been denied by a local Board of Education to appeal that denial to the Charter Commission. In this case, Rutherford County Schools Board of Education voted to deny the amended application of Rutherford Collegiate Prep on October 14, 2021. Rutherford Collegiate Prep then appealed the denial by email to the Charter Commission and that appeal was received on October 25, 2021. We notified the sponsor and the local Board of Education of this hearing. It was posted on the Charter Commission's website. It was also published in the Daily News Journal on November 30th and was given it to individuals who requested information about this hearing which is open to the public. Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 4913108, in an appeal, the Charter Commission shall conduct a de novo review of the proposed charter school's application to determine if the local board's decision was "contrary to the best interests of the students, the school district, or the community." To fulfill the Commission's responsibilities required by law, in addition to this hearing, a committee of qualified individuals will conduct a de novo review of the amended application and using the state's scoring rubric will independently rate the application. The committee has also conducted a capacity interview with the sponsor to assess their capacity to operate the proposed school. The committee will prepare a report, which I will consider in making my recommendation to the Charter Commission. The Tennessee Public Charter School Commission will then meet to review my recommendation, which will include the findings of this hearing, the review committee's report, and a comprehensive review of the full record by the Charter Commission staff. Pursuant to Charter Commission Policy 2.000, the Commission will consider my recommendation, but they are not bound by it. If the Commission finds that the application meets or exceeds the metrics outlined in the Tennessee Department of Education scoring rubric and that the approval is in the best interests of the students, the school district, and the community, the Commission may approve the charter school's application. If the application is approved by the Commission, then the Commission will become the authorizer and the LEA of that charter school. In this case, the Commission will render a decision on this appeal at its meeting on January 7, 2022. Details about that meeting and how to listen will be provided to both parties as well as will be posted on the Commission's website. So I'd like to start with an overview of today's proceedings. We will begin with opening presentations from both parties. They will have up to 15 minutes for that opening presentation. I will then take the opportunity to ask some questions of both representatives. Then we will have an opportunity for public comment. Only those individuals who have signed up in advance will be called and recognized during public comment. We have nine individuals who have signed up to give a comment today and those individuals will be recognized for a maximum of two minutes. My colleague Drejon right here will be keeping time and you will hear an alarm when those two minutes are up. If you are interested in providing a comment but did not sign up in advance, we do have multiple opportunities available to you to provide a written comment. First, we have blank paper available at this hearing. It's in the blue folder underneath the agendas. You are welcome to leave a written comment here with one of my team members, Maggie and Beth further down. You can also submit a comment directly on the Charter Commission's website and information about how to submit those written comments are available on the agenda. We will be accepting written comments on this appeal to be considered in the director's recommendation for the next week. After we conclude public comment, we will give both parties up to 10 minutes for a closing statement. I do want to note that this hearing is being recorded and that we do have staff members who are taking notes. All of this information will be considered a part of the record and presented to the Commission as a part of their review. We are now ready for opening presentations. We're going to turn to Rutherford County Schools first. I would ask that you state your name for the record as you begin your remarks so that we are able to capture that in our notes.
Thank you. I am Jeff Reed. I'm the attorney for the Rutherford County Board of Education. So first of all, I'd like to welcome you to Murfreesboro today in Rutherford County. So it's a very special time here at the courthouse with the holiday season. We had the Christmas tree lighting this past Friday and it's a very Norman Rockwell-type moment. So I'm glad, I hope you guys get a chance to enjoy the downtown surroundings at the Christmas season and holiday season this year. But along with, I would like to introduce my co-presenters. We have Dr. James Sullivan, who's the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for the Rutherford County. We also have Assistant Superintendent Doug Botery, who's Director, Assistant Superintendent for Finance for the school system. And initially, let me address one thing to give just with respect to the procedural history of this matter. As you probably are aware, when the application was first presented to the Board of Education, there was some question whether or not the applicant was a Category 1, 2, 3 applicant. When the application was submitted, it was submitted as a Category 1 applicant, as a new start applicant. At the time, the Rethink Forward had been approved in Metro Davison County for a school there. And the differences between the category of applicants is significant in the fact that with respect to existing Category 2 or 3 applicants, they are required to provide some additional information with respect to the application package that a new applicant is not required to provide. So in this case, when the application came to the school system, the school system looked at it and consulted actually with the State Department of Education and possibly with your division as well to see how the application should be treated. The school board, the staff of the school board deemed the school board, the application to be incomplete and did not take action on it initially and contacted the State Commissioner about how to respond to the application. And in response to that, Commissioner Schwinn issued a letter on May 1, 2020 saying this. She says, "I can certainly appreciate both parties. RCS and Rethink are of the belief that their positions and actions are based on the language of their starter school application, the State Board of Education rules, and the law." Says, "RCS is correct to assert that charter authorizers have no obligation to review or formally act upon an incomplete application and that the application does require an existing Tennessee operator proposing to replicate an existing school to provide certain information. I can understand why RCS might take the position that a charter school operator with an existing charter agreement would not be considered a new start applicant." The Commissioner went on to say, "Rethink completed the charter school application with correct information based on their current status and given that the application did not provide a clear instruction or options for their novel circumstances. While Rethink does have a current charter school agreement with Metro Nashville Public Schools, they have not yet opened the school and are not in operation. As a result, they would not have been able to complete the application as an existing operator which requires information about current school operations and performance and clearly suggests that the school is currently serving students. Because of this, I can understand why Rethink would not consider the existing agreement with Metro Nashville Public Schools to be an existing operator proposing to replicate an existing school." The letter went on to say, "The current charter school application was not drafted to anticipate a unique set of facts such as the one presented by the applicant like Rethink. The department's current charter application and guidance does not provide clarity over whether Rethink should be considered a new start applicant or an existing Tennessee operator proposing to replicate an existing school. One might argue that Rethink does not fit any of these types of applicants listed in the application but did submit a complete application based on the best fit of the options available." And so as a result of this, the Commissioner did recommend that their application be go and be considered to be complete and the Rutherford County Board of Education then acted accordingly and acted on the application, deemed it as if it was a complete application as a Category 1 applicant. So procedure there is important because the issue's been raised in the matter. Let me turning, turning to the actual, the metrics themselves and the scoring rubric. As you're aware, the State of Tennessee has an application for charter schools that is fairly extensive and the kind of the instructions themselves on the charter school application says that the State Board of Education has adopted quality charter authorizing standards in Policy 6.111, Standard 2C, which addresses rigorous approval criteria for the application process and decision-making. So it's kind of a rigorous standard that the State Department of Education has established to review these charter school applications. It goes on to say that "for an application to be deemed ready for approval, the summary rating for all applicable categories must meet or exceed the standard." So it's not that you get majority, you can't just satisfy a majority of the categories and be deemed ready for approval. You have to get, exceed, meet or exceed the standard with respect to all applicable categories. So it's a fairly high standard that has been established by the State Department of Education. And what, so you then ask, well, what does it mean to meet or exceed the standard? And that is also defined in the application. The application says to meet or exceed the standard, "the response has to reflect a thorough understanding of key issues. It clearly aligns with the mission and vision of the school. The response includes specific and accurate information that shows thorough preparation." So that is one of the three options with regard to how to rate a charter school applicant. The other two are partially meet standard or does not meet standard. So those are the three options a school system has to review charter applications. So only if a charter applicant meets or exceeds the standards in all applicable categories under the instructions and direction of the State Department of Education is a charter applicant deemed ready for approval. So in this case, certainly we have, you know, Rethink Forward has certainly experience with some charter schools in Metro Davison County and they are very good at marketing material, have nice presentations, and do a good job along those lines. What appears to have happened in this case, it appears that maybe Rethink Forward took an application they took, had applied for in Metro Nashville and kind of gave it to Rutherford County. It appears that perhaps all the changes that were particular to Rutherford County may not have been made with it and it kind of goes to kind of whether the charter school itself was kind of fully prepared to begin an operation in Rutherford County that has kind of a different situation in many respects than what Metro Nashville has with respect to its public schools. But when you turn specifically to the criteria, I do have a presentation here somewhere. Let me click on this. Let me just initially, initially address the, the Rutherford County Board of Education did have a committee established to review the application. It was made up a number of representative of the community, the school system. Dr. James Sullivan will address the composition of that committee in answer to some questions that will be coming up later on and did do its own independent due diligence with respect to the application itself. The timeline, we've talked about there and the important dates that we talked about. The basis for the denial and by the Board of Education is kind of really threefold is first, it's the charter applicant was not found to meet, meet or exceed the criteria under the State Department of Education scoring rubric. Second, there was minimal evidence of community support provided in the application itself and the, the application wants to found it to have a negative fiscal impact on the school system. To turn to the scoring criteria by the Board of Education with respect to the first item, which is on the scoring rubric is Section 1.1, which is kind of the measurable criteria by which the schools, by the 1.1 is the school mission and vision. And in this requirement, the applicant is to provide a mission statement that is clear, concise, compelling, and measurable. In this case, the applicant did a pretty good job with respect to a mission statement, but the lacking component was the measurable component that was not really provided. With respect to, you know, elementary schools, public elementary schools in Tennessee, we have the, you have ESS standards, which is Every Student Succeed Act, where you have objective measurable things. You have to determine with respect to growth, achievement, English language proficiency achievement, and attendance. Those are very objective measurable things that the Tennessee school systems have to comply with. There was no comparable type of measurable measurement stick provided by the applicant in this case to provide a measurable standard by which they can judge themselves as to whether or not they're achieving their own mission goals. So certainly their mission goals are worthwhile. They're not anything anyone could argue with, but at the end of the day, you, there has to be accountability. There has to be some measurable means to determine whether or not those are being achieved. In this case, the committee who reviewed the application did not find sufficient evidence of measurable standards in the application itself. The application was strong on buzzwords and kind of slogans, but the criteria was missing. The second, and we have a little bit of time, so we can't go through all these, but the second item on the metric is 1.2 Enrollment Summary. And this, one of the requirements here was the applicant had to clearly describe the community from which the school intends to draw students, including demographics, school zones, and academic performance of existing schools. The committee in this case found that the academic performance criteria that had been charted, decided by the charter school was insufficient because the charter school only included one year of data and did not include any growth data. So, and that is important in the sense that Rutherford County Schools has no schools on the state priority list. So we have zero schools in our county on the state priority list. So it also kind of goes to the fact that some of the kind of the data in it did not seem to be accurate that the charter applicant was presenting. They were, the charter applicant was showing a free and reduced lunch rate of 3% when in this section of the county, the free and reduced, just plainly wrong, the free and reduced count in our northwest region of the county is 60% or more in all our schools. So the applicant was showing 3% as opposed to over 60%. So again, it just shows that maybe there wasn't, maybe the information for Rutherford County was not really put together in the, in the plan. So also it goes, the, the application showed cited a natural attrition in the middle school grades. And that is true in Metro Davison County, from what we understand, that in middle school grades, you do have a good number of exodus of students from the public school system who go to private school in Davison County. But in Rutherford County, that's not the case. It's actually, actually the opposite. In Rutherford County, we have a 20% increase in student enrollment in the middle grades. So a plan that projects a decline in student enrollment because of attrition really is not consistent with what we experience here in Rutherford County, which is a 20% increase in growth in the middle grades. So again, we just, the data, the information in the enrollment summary was not quite correct. So the committee did not find that the applicant met or exceeded the state criteria in that regard. And then going on to 1.3 in the standards, it was, there was a focus on academic focus and plan and the requirement of the state is the curriculum supports a robust, I'll maybe just read it. "The curriculum is robust, supports the growth of all students, and is aligned with Tennessee state standards." Certainly they have, they have lots of buzzwords. The charter school has good marketing material. They talk about a guaranteed and viable curriculum, but they really did not provide the details of what a guaranteed and viable curriculum is. And in initial application, the committee made notes that really they, there wasn't sufficient detail provided with respect to what the curriculum was, was actually going to be. And even in amended application, there was no more detail provided other than saying that the, it was just a vague response. It said, "All curriculum will meet Tennessee academic standards." So without any, any specifics as to what makes up the curriculum. And the committee was looking for specifics in that regard. With respect to the, there was a lot of references in the application to the I-Ready program, which is kind of a program of textbooks that some states use for reading and math. The I-Ready textbooks in Tennessee have not been approved and in fact, the I-Ready presenter did not present those for approval in Tennessee as we understand it because they did not think they met Tennessee standards. But there was heavy reliance on the I-Ready standards in the presentation of the charter school applicant and that is not a, the I-Ready in reading has not been approved in Tennessee, so we do not think it meets Tennessee standards. So when you look to see where the requirements of Section 1.2 is met, 1.3 is met, the curriculum is robust and aligned with Tennessee state standards, it's just not. So that's another basis for the denial.
Thank you so much for that opening statement. We are now going to turn to representatives from Rutherford Collegiate Prep. Drejon, would you mind switching out the presentation? And once that gets switched out, we will start your time. And please do, when you begin your statements, state your name for the record.
My name is Tom Lee. I am a member of the Rethink Forward Board and I am also a member of the law firm of Frost Brown Todd in Nashville. And I'm pleased to be here on behalf of Rethink Forward and our application for Rutherford Collegiate Prep. I'd like to talk about what the Commission has before it and the posture in which it comes and I'll follow this as best I can. If the Commission finds that the application meets or exceeds the metrics in the Department of Education's application scoring rubric and that approval is in the best interest of the students, LEA, or community, then the Commission may approve. That is what we are here to talk about. We have three issues before the, the Commission. First, is there a substantive, substantial, excuse me, negative fiscal impact on Rutherford County Schools posed by the authorization of this charter school? We submit there is not. The key word is substantial negative fiscal impact. Whether a charter school is funded by state and local funds is beyond dispute. Every single charter school in the state of Tennessee is. If the authorization of a charter school amounted to a substantial negative fiscal impact, there would be no charter schools. This school would, if fully staffed, amount to roughly 1% to 1.5% of the annual $452 million budget of Rutherford County Schools. In fact, Rutherford County stands to generate a net fiscal gain from this school because Rutherford County, as it grows, would not need to build additional school buildings and additional seats. The operating cost, yes, is borne by the school district, but the taxpayers also pay for the capital expense that must be borne by the county commission. A charter school does not require the county commission to issue bonds to build a school. Issue two, whether Rutherford County, pardon me, Rutherford Collegiate Prep meets or exceeds state metrics. We submit, of course, that it does. We have a conservative budget. It generates cash flow within and at the end of the school's first year, we have contracted with an experienced Tennessee school operator with an outstanding record. Also, this school meets state standards for EL instructions, sped students. A proven academic model involving community learning and formative assessments is at the heart of our program. It's detailed throughout our application. Finally, our charter management organization, Noble Education Initiative, also offers an education development program, an educator development program, excuse me, that helps the professional development and aids in, in the increasing, not just retention, but also certification and licensure of teachers at RCP. As someone who's involved in private business myself, I know the difficulty of retaining persons in, in this time in our businesses and in our environments. And so it is important to continue to develop and have professional development staff onsite involved in the school. Finally, is RCP in the best interest of the students, community, and yes, the school district? And we submit that it is. According to the Tennessee Department of Education Report Card, Rutherford County Schools enrollment has increased 2% since 2019 from approximately $45,500 to $46,500. During that time, Rutherford County Schools budget has increased 11%. But during that same time, we find that only 34.7% of Rutherford County Schools are on track or mastering their latest state assessments, down 17% since 2019. There is a need. There is a need. We'll talk about that more as we go on. First, I'd like to talk about preliminary, this matter of substantial fiscal impact. Tennessee Code says if the LEA's denial is based on substantial negative fiscal impact, then the Commission shall consider that fiscal impact of the school on the LEA. We submit that Rutherford County Schools made an insufficient finding in its resolution. This is what it says. "The applicant's plan requires immediate funding from the county school system and may require emergency funding." Well, if immediate means the flow of dollars through the BEP, well then yes. That is true. Emergency funding, with all due respect, is not in our application. There's no request for emergency funding from the local school district. The resolution goes on, "The charter school would divert approximately $4.8 million away from the Rutherford County school system during a time when the school system is facing rapid growth." As I mentioned, this is between 1 and 1.5% of the school district's budget. It is as if 450 students, and this is a substantial community, it's on its way to becoming the fourth largest county in the state with a school system to match. It's as if 450 students moved from a county of well more than 300,000 people. This is not a substantial fiscal impact. I'd like to talk a little bit about the academic program and, and I'll simply say about this slide, that our board first came into contact with Noble Education Initiative on the basis of its performance in Indiana, where you can see on the screen that high schools and elementary schools, middle schools that had been Fs under Indiana's grading system moved to Cs and As for the first time ever. Highest grades achieved since state takeover of these schools, NEI was brought in to manage them and improved them, improved them so much that the local school district came to the state and said, "We'd like them back," at the end of NEI's contract to manage those schools. Here in Tennessee, NEI has four schools presently in its management network. It has moved two of those schools off the federal targeted support and improvement list and the additional targeted support and improvement list. Those schools under NEI's management are on the state's priority list and already, though this is not an academic matter, it's a fiscal matter, I'd like to point out that under Rethink Forward, NEI is managing Nashville Collegiate Prep now and that already before the December break, the school has a cash fund balance of $619,000. Also, I'd like to point out, the majority of students have come to that school one to two grades behind grade level. I agree with Mr. Reed, growth is important, but so is proficiency because that's what state law requires of a charter school, that it moves students to proficiency, not merely to move them along the continuum. We are partnered with Treveka Nazarene University, one of Tennessee's leading training of teachers. Indeed, most of the high school and middle school principals in this part of the state are Treveka graduates. The RCS Board Resolution, and I thank Mr. Reed for, for pointing this out a moment ago, he read it accurately. He said, "The applicant's mission statement does not indicate in measurable terms what the school intends to do, for whom, and to what degree." This is what our mission statement says. It says, "Students will leave RCP with the skills and mindset necessary to not only face reality but create environments for the next generation, to shape the world before them. Our vision is to inspire and equip a generation of self-directed critical thinkers to influence their world." How do we do that? The what is, "Students receive the necessary support and learning," this is in the application, by the way. "Necessary support and learning experiences that lead to each student's achievement of Tennessee standards." For whom? RCP will be a school of choice, the only kind, the only one of its kind in Rutherford County, a school of choice, and will enroll any eligible student for For whom, any eligible student who submits a timely application and participates, if necessary, in a lottery process, we will not discriminate against any one on any basis. How it works? Our plan, again, from the application, includes a focus on data-driven, standards-based instruction, development of student social and emotional learning skills. It is fine to say that those are merely buzzwords, but they are not. They have meaning, and the meaning is fleshed out in the application before you in its more than 250 pages. Finally, the model. How it works is not only spelled out in the application, there is a picture of it, which I'm not finding at the moment. Oh, well, there is a picture of it in the application of the continuous improvement model at page 20. You'll find it as you read it. The model is a cycle. It begins with assessment. It goes through planning. It goes through instruction, and then it goes through testing again, and on, and on, and on, all leading toward individualized learning plans. What do parents want? In other words, is this school in the best interest of the community? What they want is great school leaders. They want to be involved. They want continuous improvement. They want innovative curriculum, and they want sound financial management. I'm going to take on just a couple of things in the application. First, from the RCS assessment, page 171 of the application directly asks for a waiver from licensed principals. To be an instructional leader, it says it is essential that one is licensed to talk the talk and walk the walk. Yes, we will request a waiver if this school is authorized with respect to licensed principals. Yes, we will. This charter commission has granted each school it has authorized such a waiver. Parental involvement. The RCS assessment says, "The review team is concerned, is there a participation requirement for parents?" This would not promote equity. And the answer is no. There's not. It's not anywhere in the application. Parental involvement is essential, but there is no requirement that parents spend a certain amount of time here. Continuous improvement. There is mention of a continuous improvement model, but no model is presented. There it is. Presented in the book, in detail, with text around it to explain it. Guided reading is not the focus of state programming. In fact, the state moved away from this model. We understand that. We will request a waiver from it because we believe that the reading curriculum that we use is innovative. It is another reason to grant this school, not to deny it. And finally, finances. The RCS assessment says, "There's a lack of oversight of the state comptroller for any debt issuance," and the school begins perhaps with $1 that is not borrowed funds, and there's question in the assessment as to whether the school can borrow money. Tennessee Code annotated 49-13-124 provides charter schools the right to borrow money, the authority, the power to do so. Tennessee Code annotated 49-13-127A1 provides the comptroller the right to audit our books. So, yes, the comptroller has oversight, and, yes, the school can borrow funds. It's just a mischaracterization of charter law, charter finances, and frankly, the application Tennessee State Board of Education Quality Authorizer Standards say this. "The quality authorizer focuses on holding schools accountable for outcomes rather than processes. It is the autonomy that is granted charter schools in exchange for accountability for results. We embrace that exchange. That's why we're here, and we hope, in the next time we have together, to continue that discussion." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those opening presentations. We are now going to move into questions that I have for both the local board and the sponsor. I will start with representatives from the local board of education. Please do try to keep your answers relatively brief, approximately three minutes. Drejon will be setting the timer, so when you hear that alarm, if you haven't wrapped up, we do ask that you try to wrap up so that we can get to all the topics as well as have sufficient time for public comment. When you go to answer a question, please do state your name for the record. So the first question I have for Rutherford County Schools is that this is the first charter application that Rutherford County Schools has received. So can you describe for me how the district compiled a review committee, including community participation, and what training was provided to ensure an unbiased review of the application? You're welcome to answer there as long as your mic is on.
All right. Thank you. This is actually not the first charter application we've received in Rutherford County. Is that better? Okay. So, all right, just to repeat, this is not the first charter application we've received. We received one in 2012 as well for the 1314 school year. We follow the Tennessee School Board Association policies of Rutherford County School District, and that policy would be 1.901 charter school applications. Due to the changes in state statute this last year, those statutes actually changed from 1.704 to 1.901, which updated some of the timelines. That went from the February to April 1st to February 1st. So those were some of the changes we had to make in our policies. The review team, as our board policy states, from 1.901, '22 through '25, if necessary, the board shall appoint a review team to assist in reviewing and evaluating charter school applications. The team shall be comprised of members of the administrative staff for the district, community members, and a member of the board with relevant educational, organizational, financial, and legal experience. Our RCS board reviewed the process and the scoring rubric on our 121, January 21, 2021 board meeting. Our actual committee was approved on March 4th by the RCS board. We then had our initial meeting on March 9th, where we went over the scoring rubric in detail, went over the process, all of our board policies yet again, and broke out the sections of when we would have all of those reviewed. As part of that process, we also included board members, or members of the committee from the 2012-13 review process to give us an overview of the time period. For our charter review team, we had myself, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Anthony, Assistant Superintendent for HR and Student Services, Mr. Bowdery, Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance, Mark Goyan, Federal Programs, Katie Kaschubosky, Special Education, Kelly Chastain, ESO and Science, and then two principals from the area, Carrie Holman, Dr. Carrie Holman, and Paige George, representing the Smyrna and Laburne area. Sheila Bratton is our school board member and former RCS educator. Wayne Blair, a Rutherford County community member and county commissioner. I'm Raquel Peebles, a Rutherford County community member, also a parent of a homeschool student, Smyrna Town Council member, local attorney, and then a parent, John Sherman, as well. And so that represented our committee.
Thank you very much. My next question is, upon receipt of the amended application, can you describe how the district reviewed those changes within the application? And then what concerns specifically remained after that amended application review?
So we received the actual notification of the amended application on August 27th. We then notified our board. We began that review process again on September 13th, notified the committee to complete feedback for each section as appropriate. We reviewed that amended application from there until October 12th to give a final recommendation to our board on our October 14th meeting. We still had three main concerns. The academic concern first, second, community support, and then third, financial. And going back to the connection of what our concerns were to where this was just a copied application from a previous applicant for Nashville Collegiate Prep. These are submitted documents from Rethink Forward. This is attachment N. You can see that the proposed school name, even on the amended application that was re-submitted, was Rutherford County Charter School, and the proposed authorizers Metro Nashville Public Schools. So that was still a concern that was not noted on the amended application. Second, this is hard to see, but it will be part of the record for question two, the same exact thing. This is looking at their budget sheets, and on the line with authorizer fee, it states maximum amount which school can pay to authorizer per MNPS. Again, we are Rutherford County Schools, not Metro Nashville Public Schools. And as we looked at these and the academic performance and what, as Mr. Reed was discussing, yes, charter schools can ask for waivers. As part of this process, we are looking for a rigorous approval. We are a high-performing district. We have high expectations, and those high expectations don't change just because of what waivers would be or not be approved.
Thank you very much.
Question three.
Absolutely. So the third question I have is that one of the reasons cited in the resolution for denial was that the governing board has no resonance of the county on the board. However, this is not a requirement of the Department of Education scoring rubric or state statute. So can you describe why this was cited as a reason for denial?
Although it's not required in statute, it is part of the scoring rubric. Being a community member and being a vested member of this community, community support is a section, again, that's supported in 1.12 of the scoring rubric. As Mr. Reed discussed, the middle school enrollment in Rutherford County Schools substantially increases. We have two school districts in Rutherford County, Murfreesboro City and Rutherford County Schools. Rutherford County Schools operates K-12, Murfreesboro City K-6. When those sixth-grade students leave, they automatically become Rutherford County students, and that natural attrition that is in this application is quite blatantly wrong for how Rutherford County Schools operates. Second, there are no local letters of community support, MOUs, or contracts, as is required for in those characteristics of a strong responsible. And number two, there are three or more letters of support with community partners. That is not the case. In fact, question, or for question three is one of the attachments as well. Here's yet another example of a letter that was submitted that clearly states Metro Nashville Public Schools yet again.
Great, thank you. So to clarify, it was more about the lack of community documentation support than having a physical member on the governing board.
100%.
Thank you for that clarification. So my fourth question, which may or may not be for you.
Yeah, I'd like Mr. Bowdery to come over here.
Absolutely. I will read as you all change it out. So in the documentation submitted by the district on the fiscal impact of the school, the district stated that the school will receive approximately $4.8 million in year one in local and state BEP revenue. Can you share what per pupil rate was used in the student enrollment count to come to that conclusion?
Doug Bowdery, Assistant Superintendent of Budget and Finance for Rutherford County Schools. Where we arrived with this number, it came from the charter school's application. They put in their financials, $4,804,340, the amount of state and local BEP for their year-one budget. That's provided, like I said, by Rutherford Collegiate Prep, and they estimate 470 students. Will you break that down? That's $10,222 per student. As Dr. Sheldon noted, that's actually Davidson County's BEP per pupil funding. That's not Rutherford County. Rutherford County is substantially lower at $8,690 per pupil BEP funding, 41% local, 59% state. Obviously, that's going to cause issues with their projected financials, as we noted in our rebuttal. The charter school pointed out that we have a large budget. He added $10 million to what my amended budget is right now, but he's in the ballpark. My point, though, with this is, yes, we have a large budget, but because of the BEP funding, how it's always a year behind with our growth, we have substantially, every year, operated in budgeted deficits of millions of dollars. So when you say, "I want to take so much, only this much of your students away," when you're already in a budgeted deficit, every dollar counts. And my point with this is because of the lack of zoning for the charter school, Rutherford County Schools will most likely not be able to reduce staffing to maintain state-required student-teacher ratios. That impacts that revenue number we're talking about. We had supplied to you this form showing what $4.8 million is, in equivalent to teacher FTE funding. That's 71, almost 71 and 1/2 FTEs for teachers. Because there's not a zone for this charter school, they'd be pulling from all across the northern end of our county, which had a growth of about 200 students in the K-5 so far this fiscal, or this school year. We would be forced, because of those class-size ratios, to maintain that teaching staff. Therefore, we would not be able to reduce that expenditure budget. I'll go allude to the expenditure budget, $856,269. That's what a penny on the county property tax levy requires. So if we were looking at this for this year for approval, that's over 5 and 1/2 cents on the property tax levy that we would be requesting the county commission or Rutherford County for next year. This will bring a tax increase to fund this charter school because I have to maintain the staff. Now, it was discussed, the emergency funding. Obviously, when you're coming into a opening fiscal year for a school, and you have only a little bit of borrowed money to your name on day one of your operations with children in school, that's less than, as we noted, it's less than one day of operating cash. My point is, they made the statement, "If we don't get better results, we close." It's that simple. They close and leave our children, we have to then pay double and bring them back in our schools.
Thank you very much. My fifth question is, can you provide to us either now or in a written follow-up, the actual total BEP revenue that the district has received beginning in school year 2017-18, which, based on documentation that you all have provided, and then through the projected 22-23 school year? You can provide that now if you want to follow up in a written form, you can do that as well.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll just make that brief because it's just numbers. I have this right for you on a spreadsheet for the actual 2017-18 through actual 2021 state local BEP that was supported in the State Department of Ed. These amounts are, all these amounts were audited by the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury. We also put in here our estimate for state and local, which was submitted on a plan to the State Department of Ed and accepted, and the current, then we had an estimate for the next fiscal year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and we'll include that as a part of the record. And my final question for Rutherford County Schools is that throughout the documentation submitted by Rutherford County to the commission, the district notes that the district and the county are growing rapidly, both in terms of population growth and student growth. So some districts have used charter schools as an option to help alleviate capacity needs, both in terms of student enrollment, facilities, and so how could a high-quality charter school within the district support enrollment needs, facility constraints, and academic needs?
Absolutely. So first, school choice is essential to student outcomes. I think that has to be a foundational belief. Our students have to have options, and our parents have to have options for them to be successful. Our position on this applicant was this applicant did not meet the standards. It was not anti-school choice, anti-charter schools. Our issues were holding up this application to the rigorous processes required by the Tennessee State Department in their scoring rubric. And looking at some of our trends, as mentioned a minute ago, elementary and middle school, yes, we see some growth there. From last year, from March, we're, NEIS, we're up about 200 students in elementary school, but as a district, we are up 1,856 kids as of November 30th. Our growth right now is largely in our middle and high school areas. And so, yes, 470 students, not potentially in our county, being through a charter school in our normal school system, may help with some of that, but 470 students in a large district is not going to pull enough from one spot for us to not have to have additional capital funds, additional class sizes, additional teaching positions. That is not what this application would do. And so as we were kind of looking at that, as Mr. Bowdery mentioned, there was a comment in our Daily News Journal on 12-3, as he just mentioned, you know, our duty is not to just ensure we get students into a building so we don't have to fund their growth. Our job is to make sure our kids get the highest quality education possible. And for us, you know, if we don't get better results, we just close. That's not an option. They're our kids. We can't just close a school because we don't perform.
Thank you very much. And that concludes my questions for Rutherford County Schools. So I will now turn to Rutherford Collegiate Prep. Again, same, as I asked the question, if there are different members of the team who are answering it, please identify yourself for the record. You will have approximately three minutes, and Drejon will be setting the timer so that you know when those three minutes are up. My first question is, to please describe the research and community analysis that Rethink Forward did to determine that the proposed location within Rutherford County Schools was a good location for the proposed school.
Thank you for the question. The first suggestion that we received that Rutherford County parents were seeking an active choice in the form of a charter school was when our board opened at Nashville Collegiate Prep in the southeast section of Davidson County, and families who lived in Rutherford County were coming to us and said they had heard of the school, they wanted to know about it, they did not have that kind of a school option, and we had to tell them, "I'm sorry, we can't serve you. We can only serve Davidson County students pursuant to our charter." That was the first suggestion. We began to think about the charter law, what it requires of a charter school, and we began to frankly investigate. One of the requirements of a charter school is that it address a gap between high achievement and low achievement, and we noticed that the schools in the northern section of the county were not achieving at the same level as the schools in the rest of the county. Again, we began to review demographic data regarding growth, and we began to review facts and conduct investigation and speak to members of the committee, pardon me, the community. We spoke with ministers. We spoke with business persons. We spoke with elected officials. We spoke with ministers, we spoke with business persons, we spoke with elected officials. And we got a sense that while our school may not be for everybody, that there was a segment of this population that it was right for. There was also, and I've got Richard Page next to me, who is the, the president of Noble Education Initiative. We also did more quantitative studies of that same matter. Richard?
Thank you, Tom. Again, Richard Page, President of Noble Education Initiative, and thank you. So we did a, a number of research and analysis exercises, looking at both ESRI mapping software, census data, the Rutherford District Factbook, as well as analyzing existing Rutherford Schools to evaluate the potential need and interest in the community at looking at data. Section 1.2 of our application goes into detail about this, and, and I bring it up because this seems to be a question, it was brought up earlier, it's section 1.2. One of the things we did was when we looked at this particular area is we gathered a profile of all of the schools that currently exist in the community to understand what they look like. We gathered that data from the DOE website. It's in our application, the table of the 17 schools of elementary and middle school that, that reside within this area. And this 3% FRL rate that's been brought up comes right out of their own data. We didn't make this data up. We pulled it off the DOE website, which is populated from district folks, I suppose. And this isn't our data. We simply pulled the data because what we were responding to was the question, what do you think your student population would look like? And so what we said is, we expect it to look like the community we serve. And this is a profile of the community that we serve. Let me just say one thing real quick. Last thing I'll just say as a summary on whether it, it, you know, there's a fit. As somebody deeply involved in this process, and as somebody for the record who has been deeply involved in opening over 50 charter schools around the country in my career, when you look at the, the criteria of what makes a good area, the, looking at the degree of choice and existence for parents, a reasonable amount of population density, growth, availability of suitable locations, and interest in the community are the things that typically make up what is a successful school and school opening and successful charter school. And in this case, this area meets all of that criteria.
Thank you very much for that response. My next question is that the application states that the school plans to enroll 470 students in year one. Can you tell us how you determined there was sufficient parent demand to meet that enrollment projection?
Yeah, Richard, again, I'll, I'll lead with that, and if you want to jump in or anyone else, please do. First, I'll just state that, you know, that, that number, we have proposed a K-5 school to start in year one. So now you're looking at sixth grade levels, so it's about 75 to 80 students per grade level is what that makes up, when you think about the interest and the demand. It is approximately 1% of the enrollment of the district, not including the growth, which the district is growing faster than this each year. So the level of, of volume, based on what the number of, of students that are there, was not that great. We also did do some initial outreach. I know there's another question coming about the specific parent involvement that we've, that we've encountered in the work that we've done. So I'll go into a little bit more detail on the next question. But for this, again, I would say, we looked at the ramp. We like to try to make sure the school has a nice, consistent flow of students and, and start at the lower grades. And that's not even full capacity. So we didn't intend to open, even believe that we were going to open the full amount in each of these grade levels. And I'll give you just one example. In the school we just opened in Nashville Collegiate Prep, our kindergarten, we had also forecasted 80 there. We ended up filling the school with a waiting list on the kindergarten. Some of the other grades didn't, but the kindergarten did. So we believe that, you know, that we'll, we'll be able to meet that need.
Just as a follow-up, can you describe how, what the current enrollment of the, of the Nashville Collegiate Prep is, and any adjustments you have made if, if it didn't meet that 470 that you all proposed?
Yeah, so currently, the school is open, and it has about 330 in its current enrollment. As I said, we adjusted the kindergarten. The second and third grades were a little lower, that, in that 50 range, that we were, you know, more than the 75 or 80 we'd originally projected. As we've discussed, and happy to go into greater detail whenever, you know, there was certainly a set of unique circumstances that went into the opening of that school with, by the time we were able to even announce the location, it was June. And so there was a lot of resistance of not even knowing where the school is, which made it very difficult for us to convince parents at that time. We did see quite a rush of applications at the end, as we were able to get the school open and show that it was here. But that, by that time, you know, we did pretty good getting, in my opinion, getting to that level and the timeframe that we had at NCP. And based on the demand that we have now, we're, we're very confident that next year we will, we will be on our ramp.
Thank you. So can you describe the specific community support you've developed within the proposed school, and what the school's plan is to continue to build that community support if it is approved?
Yeah, thank you. So a number of things. We've had, we've had a number of meetings in the community. In fact, our community engagement leader, Jackie, is here today. She's been out and about. We've met with Rutherford students first, had a really good meeting with that organization. They've demonstrated a lot of interest and support, and sent out communications to their parent network about who we are. We've met with a number of ministries and churches in the community. One of the things we typically do early is meet with pastors and, you know, talk about who we are and, and the impact we can have on the lives of their, of their, you know, children in their churches. Have, have been asked back multiple times to come and meet with them. We did a survey on our website. We do have a website, and we put on a, an interest survey. In August, we promoted it, and in, in a few weeks, we received 115 responses, of which 114 of those were parents said, yeah, I'm very much interested in this in my community. So we, we actually had another, we're continuing this process. We had an information session last Thursday here in Smyrna. We had about 20 community members show up, including some elected officials, leaders of these community events, as well as a number of parents and interested parents, some folks who know about other schools that we operate, as well as ones that, you know, quite frankly, had a lot to say about their desire for other options in their community and their, you know, dissatisfaction with not having other choices. In terms of going forward, we are prepared to continue that process and really put it into overdrive if we are approved for an application. We're able to come to the community and say, yes, we're coming, as opposed to what do you think? It changes the conversation substantially in parent interest when you can tell them that we're coming. And that process will really roll out in a multi-facet way. We will do neighborhood canvassing, we will engage in direct mail, online advertising, we will have continued community forums, we will rent a space here in Rutherford to have our temporary office and invite parents in. We will open our doors, we will reach out to the different collaterals, newspapers, radio stations, ethnic outlets, so that we can make sure we get our message out in multiple languages to different populations, and invite them all in to learn more and hopefully come forward with an application if we're provided that opportunity.
Thank you. My next question is with regard to the facility plan. So the application states that you all have some potential facility sites within Rutherford County. Can you describe where you are in the facility search, and what are the facility contingency plans that you all have?
I'm happy to take that question, at least at the beginning of it. We have researched extensively, probably as, as much time invested in this effort as any other. We want a, we want a greenfield, frankly. We want, we want to build the school from the ground up, because the architecture of the school is essential to our style of, of, of teaching and learning. And so we want to create communities of learning within grade levels, and, and that requires frankly, a, a, a unique form of, of, of structure. So we've, we've researched property. It takes some acreage to accommodate principally parking and driveways, but, but it does take some acreage to, to accommodate the school. We've looked extensively in this area, and particularly in the northern part of the counties, we found several opportunities. Of course, we're not going to be able and wouldn't, wouldn't want to put property under contract or even under a, a kind of an MOU until there's a decision made on the charter one way or the other, to be irresponsible, and frankly, not, not responsible to the potential seller of the property to do so. But we, we will engage that process with some ferocity once we go forward, if we have that opportunity. I will say here that we are operating frankly, a little late in the game, as the commission knows, and the commission staff knows, and as Mr. Reed alluded to earlier. We are frankly all three months later than we should be. And we're three months later than we should be, because it, it just took that long for the school district to move. And, and we have, we have exchanged sharp and sometimes very difficult words about that. But this question is aimed at the school and not at the process that came before. So frankly, it will be a challenge to develop from the ground up. We anticipate that if we are awarded the opportunity to open a school here, beginning in the 2022 school year, we would have to search for some sort of temporary facility or, you know, pursuant to section 110B of the Charter Act, consider a decision to request a delay and, and frankly authorize, use our, our right under that section to ask for a one-year delay. But not until after we, we, A, know what we're doing with respect to the commission, and then B, conduct a search, a vigorous search, because, you know, parents only have their, their children in school for 12 years. When they come to us and they say, we want this choice, we want to be able to respond to that promptly.
Thank you. My next question is that Rutherford Collegiate Prep would be the second school under the Rethink Forward governing board. So I would like to hear how the governing board will adjust to oversee two schools growing from one, and what challenges the governing board foresees that it will need to overcome.
Thank you for that question. I'm Dan Boone. I serve as the chairman of the Rethink Forward Board. We, we don't come to the community with a conflictual status in any way. We care about the community, and the involvement of community persons within this process is critically important for us. As the chairman of Rethink Board, I have three grandchildren who are in the Rutherford County Schools there in Blackman Elementary and Junior High. I've helped start two churches in the, in Rutherford County, and each has sponsored a church, the Hopgood Elementary sponsorship was a wonderful relationship that we had. And also, as president of Trebek and Azren University, I think I have significant roots in Rutherford County in terms of during COVID, the university provided free virtual training for all teachers in how to teach virtually during that particular period of time. Trebek is also training the EL and, and SPED certification. Only two universities in the state have provided that. So we're one of those two providers. So tremendous roots that go into this. In terms of opening, we have followed, our board has followed the state website guidance in terms of the development of a board, and we're perfectly on track. We're in the process of adding a new board member that is a community representative for Nashville Collegiate Preparatory. And should we be granted this by the state, we would immediately begin to look for that same representative here in the Rutherford County area. Our experience with Noble Education Enterprise is that they have been exceptionally proficient at bringing a, a school to opening and operating that well. We now have the ability to watch not only the Indianapolis schools that we studied, but we've able to, been able to watch their work, that KA there in the Nashville area, and also what we're doing with Nashville Collegiate Prep. I'm going to allow Sheri to pick up this next one. Do you want to add?
Sheri Hage, CEO of NEI. I would only add that in this process, NEI is looking to add support on our local team. So we stand up a local team. Our current local team has our family community engagement director, we have our director of compliance and operations, we have our grants coordinator, and we have our director of curriculum and instruction. And in this process, as we look to manage more schools for the Rethink Forward Board, we would look at adding that special populations individual, the EL and SPED support, a director of facilities, and then a director of finance. So those would be additional support positions at the NEI level that would be local here to oversee and work with the schools and with the board.
Thank you. And my final question is, as we have discussed, the earliest that the charter commission will be making a decision on this appeal is January of '22. So if approved, how does the school anticipate needing to make adjustments to its pre-opening timeline and process in order to ensure a successful opening in August of '22?
Thank you for that question. Touched on it just a moment ago. I'll, I'll flesh that answer out just a bit more. First is, is the consideration of location and facility that I, that I mentioned. If the school opens in August 2022, and we are able to identify a, a short-term location in which to open, everybody who's ever been a part of a congregation that has started out in the school cafeteria knows what I'm talking about, we can then adjust frankly both our budget and our enrollment numbers down to, to, to accommodate that smaller space. We'd almost have to, unless there's just an amazing piece of property out there that would develop. We would then set about the process of, immediately of developing and building a school to be ready in August of 2023. Another option, as I mentioned, but it's just an option at this point, is provided by section 110B of the Charter Act, which would give the school, if authorized, the opportunity to, to request and take advantage of a one-year delay in opening. Again, not a favorite option, because we want to be able to serve students, and we think there's a need. So, so one, temporary space bridging to a full-time space. We do not expect to be able to construct and develop a, a permanent campus, given the time. Two, make some adjustments with respect to opening enrollment. And then three, consider whether or not pursuant to enrollment, or, excuse me, pursuant to authorization, whether a delay would be appropriate of one year.
I, I just want to add a couple things about the startup timeline and plan that would go with that. If we were able to find a reasonable location to open in, in 2022, we would adjust the timeline. But I do want to be clear, we would absolutely ensure we met the requirements of an open enrollment period. We would, we would, we would open and create that window, and we would market vigorously to the community and allow everybody an equal opportunity to apply to the school within an open enrollment window, and then conduct our lottery and move forward with our opening timeline accordingly. We also, upon, upon securing a facility to open in 2022, we would immediately hire the leader of the building, as well as the key leadership staff, just like we did at NCP. We hired the registrar, the business manager, the principal, the assistant principal, immediately to prepare and get ready for opening. It would be our anticipation that we would do the same thing, you know, upon having that facility secured.
Thank you very much. And that concludes my questions for both parties. So we are now going to move into public comments. So during the public comment portion, I will state the name of the person who has signed up to present a public comment. I will state the first person's name and then the person next, so that person can get ready. You're going to come directly to this podium. Please note that you will have a maximum of two minutes, and we, again, my colleague will let you know when those two minutes are up. Once again, as I shared, if you were not able to sign up for a public comment but want to leave a written comment today, you're welcome to use the blank paper that we have over on the agenda table to leave a comment with one of my staff. We welcome comments directly in the charter commission's website. Those comments have to be received by December 14th at 2:00 PM Central Time to be considered in the executive director's report to the charter commission. We review and consider all comments, written and oral. So I want to encourage those folks to provide a written comment if they were not able to sign up today. So the first person that we have on the list is Rhonda Allen. Then we have Joe Gurley, Gurley is next.
My name's Rhonda Allen, and I am a county commissioner. I'm the chairman of the- I'm the chairman of the Health and Education Committee and I'm also a member of the Budget Committee. I'm in my third term. I grew up in Laverne. I am in these schools often. Most of the schools in our north end of the county, most of our Title I schools are located in the north end of the county. And so I always attend their spring planning meetings. So I am familiar with these schools. I'm familiar with these students. I'm familiar with the population that we're targeting, talking about. Personally, I do not find the statement about community involvement and the desire for community involvement, I do not find that credible, only from the standpoint that not one Rutherford County citizen has contacted me and wanted this. Not one teacher, not one student, no one has expressed to me their desire to have this in our community. So when you talk about if we get approved, we'll add one person, it feels a little bit like the chicken and the egg. My concern obviously is financial because, you know, where you stand on an issue depends on where you sit, right? I sit right over there. And so my decisions based on financial impact on the citizens of Rutherford County, this is significant. You can't tell me that you can remove funding, the equivalent of 71 teachers out of our budget and that's not going to have a negative impact on the school system as a whole. So obviously, the financial impact is something that is very important to me. I also feel like we're really setting a precedence here in terms of what application information we're going to act on, what information we're going to need in advance of this relationship. Because you're establishing essentially a third public school system in Rutherford County. We have Rutherford County Schools, Murphell City Schools, and this is a third. And for lack of a better example, it feels a little bit like an arranged marriage. So you're getting to decide if we're going to be in relationship with these folks. I don't know that we need to rush through this process. I'm just asking for more time for questions to be answered so to increase all of our confidence level.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next on the list is Joe Gurley and then we have Jason Luckowitz.
Yes, my name is Joe Gurley. I am also a county commissioner. I've been on the Health and Ed Committee for the last six years. I am the product of teachers. My mother taught 20 years in Laverne. As an elected official, I've never been approached about this, nor have I heard from concerned parents or teachers within Rutherford County. Based on the comments today, I'm having a little question in my mind, is this going to be a secular or religious school? Also, from looking for property and building in the north end of the county, the process of finding suitable property and building a building is going to be very difficult. But that's not really what I want to address. The statement was made that as far as representation in Rutherford County, from Rutherford County, it's not required by the TCA, not required by the State Board of Education or the Commission's rules. However, the Constitution does require representation. So we're taking county taxes, property taxes, removing those to a private entity with no representation from the citizens who are being affected by that. The other issue I have from a constitutional standpoint, and I hope our legislators are listening who are here, is we are not allowed to fund our fire department from taxes collected within the municipalities of this county. The reason being, it's dual taxation. They already have fire service. I see this as being very similar. So those are two constitutional issues that I think our legislature or our courts need to address. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jason Luckowitz and then we have Wayne Blair.
My name is Jason J. Luckowitz. I'm a resident of Smyrna and I'm here to speak in support of the charter school. As a parent, as a taxpayer, as a property owner here in Rutherford County, I could speak to the fact that not all kids learn the same, which means not all kids necessarily are going to fit into the opportunities that are offered by Rutherford County and their schools. Having, as a teacher, I actually teach at a homeschool tutorial, which is an option that has given parents some choice in terms of students that may not fit to traditional schooling model. And I think having the opportunity to have choices available for parents and for students to expand their learning above and beyond just what might be available within a traditional school setting, gives them a huge opportunity to not only excel, but in some cases, actually find their niche. As a teacher, I've actually worked with a lot of students that don't necessarily fit the traditional schooling model and in some cases, they just feel like they don't belong. And having the opportunity to give them options to learn above and beyond what your traditional schooling model looks like, gives them an opportunity to succeed. In some cases, what we don't want to see is kids left behind or kids who are, may find themselves at a disadvantage as a result of not necessarily fitting within a traditional schooling model. So therefore, as a parent and as somebody who teaches, I think it's a huge opportunity for Rutherford County to actually have these options available and to be able to engage with the community and give them options above and beyond what their traditional models may be. So, all right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have Wayne Blair and then we have Chris Littleton.
I'm Wayne Blair. I also live in Smyrna. I am presently a county commissioner. I am a former school board member. I have represented both the Smyrna and Laverne areas during my years of service. The joint resolution between the Rutherford County School Board and the Rutherford County Commission has spelled out a number of reasons why this proposed charter school is not needed in Rutherford County. Also, I have not heard from any parents. I have not heard anything from the charter school. So other than being involved in the Charter School Review Committee, I really had not heard of this group before. I don't want to be redundant, but I will allow the joint resolution to stand on its own merit. I will say to you that I am confident that the Rutherford County School Board members are not opposed to this charter school because it's a charter school. It has been a long-held position by this board and also many before this present school board, and I can tell you this because I was a member of those past school boards. It is the judgment of our duly-elected Rutherford County School Board that they are opposed to this charter. And the duly-elected Rutherford County Commission agrees with that opposition. I respectfully ask that you reject this appeal by this specific charter school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Chris Littleton and then we will have Mayor Bill Ketrin. Okay, well, Chris, we will come back to Chris at the end if he is available. Next, we have Mayor Bill Ketrin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a decent pleasure to host you all here today. Thank you very much for coming. I would like to give you a little background on charter schools and my position on charter schools. Having served 16 years on the State Senate Education Committee and also in leadership as caucus chairman, majority caucus chairman, the first charter school that I went to was the KIP School in Nashville, Tennessee at the request of then Senator Harper, who was chairman of the Senate Education Committee. We visited that school. I came away very impressed with the process of that school. Then I traveled to Memphis and met with Senator Reggie Tate in his community in inner-city Memphis. I went to Indianapolis, went to, spent four days in Indianapolis looking because Indiana was actually leading the country in the number of charter schools that had been placed. Spent four days up there with now Lieutenant Governor McNally, now Congressman Tim Burchett, then Senator Jamie Woodson Haygood. Then I traveled to Arizona and looked and traveled with Senator Deloris Gresham, who was chairman of the Senate Education Committee, and now Congressman Mark Green. We looked at the ins and outs of charter schools and how they work. The intent of this commission that you now lead was based on what we laid the groundwork in the investigation of charter schools for the 16 years that I served on the Senate. The intent of the Senate at that time, along with the House of Representatives, was to make sure that communities were needing a charter school where there were drug houses, crack houses, there were gang bangers, et cetera, to where the charter school would come in, just like in Memphis. Take an old school that belonged, that was boarded up by the Board of Education, came back in and gave opportunity to those children. I support charter schools, but at the right time and at the right place. This is not the right time and the right place because Rutherford County, and I've always stated this, Rutherford County has two of the best educational systems in the state of Tennessee. We don't have those same issues as you find in your four other metropolitan cities. I would ask that the requister go back and ask those 114 parents that were surveyed, are you, do you like this concept if it added six cents to your property tax? If it added $50 or $100 to your rental, if you don't own property, your rent's going to go up because of the cost of what it's going to take. One more comment. We recently received AAA bond rating in this county for the first time in our history. I have worked with Mr. Spurlock and the board. This county commission has worked very well together to obtain that AAA bond rating. We're one of four counties and cities, governmental entities throughout the whole state, to reach that. If we don't have control over the money that's taken away when we, the county commission, has to ask for property tax increases, I think that jeopardizes our AAA bond rating, which costs the citizens more money. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brenda Bryant and then Lucas Hutchison.
My name is Brenda Bryant. First of all, I'm a mother. I'm a parent. I'm a pastor of a local church. I live in Smyrna, Tennessee, and our ministry office is in Laverne, Tennessee. I first had my experience with charter schools when I lived in Detroit, Michigan. And at that particular time, I was just so impressed with charter schools and what they offered. And so when I relocated back to Tennessee with my husband to help plan a church, I was so excited that I met with some locals in Nashville, Tennessee. And I was part of that board to establish the first charter school in Nashville, Tennessee. I've lived in Rutherford County for the last 20 years or so. I have two children that were in the Rutherford County system. And I want to ask this question as I thought about it, as everyone was teaching, talking today. What do parents want? What do we as parents want? Yes, we want quality schools. We want options. I had the opportunity to visit the charter school in Nashville, Tennessee here. I was so impressed with the classroom structure, with the teachers there. And so when the community meeting was held in Smyrna, Tennessee this past Thursday, the parents who were there, we were dismissed at a certain time. The parents actually stayed an hour past that time because they were so excited because they didn't know about the options that they have available. And so, yes, we've been presented with a lot of data here and that's important, but what do the parents want? And the parents want to have options for their children to have a quality education. And everything that I saw in this school, I taught in the school system. I taught in Metro. I've taught in Rutherford County. And everything that I saw in the school, I was impressed with. And not only myself, when the parents came, they were so excited. So as we talk about community involvement and the need for community involvement, I think a lot of it is just the fact that there's lack of knowledge. People don't know. But once these parents find out about what a charter school has to offer, I think that there's going to be a lot of community support. And once the word gets out, I'm willing to, I know that they will get involved, that they will be a part of this process. Yes, the parents want an option and I don't think it's taking away that much money that we cannot go ahead and offer this as an option to our community. It's time, it's time, it's time.
Thank you very much. We have Lucas Hutchison. Okay, and then we have Representative Mike Sparks.
Thank you, members. I'm Representative Mike Sparks. I represent this area in the House, in the legislature. I served on the Education Committee. I used to sit in that last seat, second last seat as county commissioner. I was for school choice then, I'm for school choice now. I know this area. My father lived in that area. I'd see my father on the weekends. I live in Smyrna. 10 of the 12 Title I schools are in my House District. I know these families. They've called me. Many of them couldn't get on here because it was cut off yesterday. But the mayor, and I think the world of the mayor, we're good friends. We served together. I happen to disagree with them. I'm proud, though, that Rutherford County school system believes in school choice and they agree that it's essential to student outcomes. We're in a hurting community. 10 of the 12 Title I schools are in my district, are in this area. They couldn't have picked a better area from an economic or demographic perspective than this area of Rutherford County, the area I was born in. We need a paradigm shift in education. Like I say, they agree with school choice is essential to student outcomes. My wife taught, was president of PTO with John Coleman, Smyrna Elementary, Smyrna Middle. She even won an award for Title I Volunteer of the Year. Really proud of my wife. My boys went to those schools. I went to those schools. I walked to those schools. David Jury, Smyrna Middle, Smyrna Primary, right down the road from me. These students need a choice. The mayor and the commissioner speaks of a tax increase. You're already facing a tax increase. The next school that they're going to build is $108.7 million for one school. $108 million. It's unsustainable. Five, almost a half billion the next five years is projected in just, in just growth for this community. I think this could be a relief valve. If maybe their I wasn't dotted, T wasn't crossed, let's work with them. Let's have local control. I always hear that from school board members, from the county commission. If they want local control, let's work with them and let's have the county control of this process rather than it's be turned over to the state where the state controls it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, circling back to Chris Littleton. And that will conclude our public comments. You have up to two minutes and please state your name for the record.
Chris Littleton, I have three kids in Rutherford County Schools. I represent an organization called Rutherford Students First. We've actually asked our parents about this issue, so I think I'll start with that. 84% of the parents surveyed said they did want choice in the county and so the question really becomes why? Is that a matter of preference for our kids? One of the things we've discovered in engaging Rutherford County Schools, and pardon my exhaustion, I literally ran here from parking. So one of the things we discovered in sort of engaging the school is there, it seems that Rutherford County Schools are decent to a lot of people, but if you remove the magnet schools from the scores, here's something that we found particularly problematic, and I have two in high school right now. 85% of kids in Rutherford County Schools are not proficient in mathematics according to the TN Ready scores that just came out. And so we go, well, COVID was a pretty terrible year. That was really bad, but we can look at scores just right before that and it's only a few percentage points better. So we had over 70% of high school kids that are not in magnet schools are not proficient in mathematics. English isn't actually that much better. We still had a 60% deficiency in those who were proficient in mathematics in schools. So we have a raw problem in scores that a lot of us wanted something better and so there's choice desired there. Then we just have the fundamental idea that we are taxpayers and we are parents and we are kind of the primary constituents in this matter and that's something that we want. We want an alternative. And then as we've engaged the schools to talk about these things, just over the last year, our organization hasn't even existed for more than a year, frankly, they didn't want to listen to us. And I mean, we can't get meetings, repeatedly have requested meetings. We can't have discussions. There's no engagement on any kind of committee. We attend the board meetings. And so we know that the school board themselves is not even listening to the problems and concerns that we have as parents in the community. concerns that we have as parents in the community, and that's become particularly problematic to us. So when you combine what we're seeing as inherent problems with the schools themselves, all we're asking is for just the ability to have other options in the county, and that's really all it comes down to at this point. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments, and we are now going to move into the last portion of our agenda, which are closing remarks from the representatives from the local board and the sponsor. Everyone will have up to 10 minutes for your remarks, and we will first turn to Rutherford County schools.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. I'm splitting my time with the closing remarks with Dr. Sullivan, who has some additional comments to make as well. But I think with the issue that is charged before this commission today is whether or not the application is deemed ready for approval. And that's fairly a strict legal standard to look at with respect to the instructions that are given by the State Department of Education. And to look at that, the instructions themselves in the charter application provide, for an application to be deemed ready for approval, the summary rating for all applicable categories must meet or exceed the standard. That's a very high standard to meet. So in all categories, not in most of the categories, in all categories. And in order to meet or exceed the standard, the definition under the state guidelines are, the response reflects a thorough understanding of key issues. It clearly aligns with the mission and vision of the school. The response includes specific and accurate information that shows thorough preparation. Certainly, the goals, rethink for it, are good and worthwhile. The things that they have apparently set in place in Nashville, Davidson County, may be good and worthwhile. That same model may not work in Rutherford County, and the preparation has not yet been made for that to be successful in Rutherford County. If you look about, they were talking about opening with 470 students. So, and if you look what kind of community engagement they've had, they're just now beginning to engage with community from their statements in the last few weeks. That was not, that had not occurred at the time that the application was filed. As a requirement within the application, they had to have three letters of local community support supporting the charter school. They did not provide any of those. Instead, the letters they provided were from out-of-state. They provided one from Horizon Education Alliance from Indiana, one from a principal from Four Corners Charter School in Florida, one from the president of the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, and the one parent recommendation letter they had was the letter you saw that really referenced Metro, Davidson County schools as opposed to Rutherford County schools. So they plainly, that requirement of the state rubric was not satisfied. So if this group wants to do a charter school, they need to do more preparation for Rutherford County, get their facts specific with respect to Rutherford County, get the parent support they need so they'd be successful when they open. With all due respect, they're just not quite there today, and by their own admission, they would struggle to have any building to be able to be open to meet the next school year, should they be approved. And with that, I reserve the rest of my time for Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Again, I just want to assure you that Rutherford County, our review committee upheld, as Mr. Reed mentioned, this is a rigorous process. We took part in a very rigorous review, as the commission has records of every one of our emails, every one of our agendas, every one of our meetings. There were numerous and numerous and numerous times that we reviewed this material. Continuing with that lack of community support, even during today's presentation, it was mentioned about a local university, Trevecca, having most of our principal graduates. I just looked up the 17 graduates of our principals. We have one of those 17 in this area. You're less than three miles from Middle Tennessee State University. That's a continued lack of understanding of this community in Rutherford County. If we are looking at the ability to perform, we are a Level V district. We are above the state average. No achievement's not. Where we want achievement across the state isn't where we want. But we continually rank, I believe out of 146 districts last year, we ranked 14th. You would not find another two districts that are large metropolitan or suburban districts that operate in the top 14 of 146 districts. We have seven choice schools, all of them being Level V schools. Three of those schools were reward schools this last past year. The comments about our achievement, again, yes, even in today's presentation, there were comments about achievement results. Achievement results at Knowledge Academies are 8.3%. That's not, that is not something that Rutherford County schools would ever consider appropriate in our district. Lastly, I just want to thank you for your time. We humbly ask that you consider the uniqueness of RCS, the findings of this board-appointed review committee, our unanimous denial of the amended application and the initial application by our school board, the resolution supported by our Rutherford County Commission, and the willingness of those in our community to speak. We have talked a lot about numbers, a lot about finances, but ultimately, this is about our students. As a Rutherford County citizen, teacher, educator, and parent, I assure you, the people in this room speaking for Rutherford County schools know what's best for Rutherford County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now turn to representatives from Rutherford Collegiate Prep for your closing statement.
I apologize for the delay in the technology. I want to thank Mr. Littleton for running up here. Mr. Littleton, we couldn't get a meeting either. We couldn't get a meeting through this entire process. Oh, we don't know about this part of your application. We don't think you quite understand us. Not once did the school district say, here is a capacity interview, please come and see us. Not once did the school district say, please sit down with us and discuss your proposal. Not once. Couldn't get a meeting. Didn't want to vote. First recommendation made to the school district was, don't vote. You don't have to vote. Not ready. No wonder nobody knew about it. No wonder. Don't vote. Why are we here three months later? Because they didn't vote. Fundamental obligation of an authorizer, a quality authorizer, is to vote. It's not optional. So why a charter school in Rutherford County? Well, state law says why. Six things. Improve learning for all students. Close the achievement gap between high and low students. It's not about, are you a good school district or a bad school district? It's about closing gaps between high and low students. Yes, they're everywhere. And here. Provide options for parents to meet the educational needs of students. Options for parents. I have a great deal of respect for Dr. Sullivan and the work that he does, but I submit to you, it is the parents who know best, and not those of you standing in front, all of us wearing our suits. Encourage the use of different and innovative teaching methods. Provide greater decision-making authority. Measure performance of pupils and faculty. And ensure that students have the opportunity to reach proficiency, not show growth. Proficiency, that's the goal. Create new professional opportunities for teachers and afford parents meaningful opportunities. Meaningful. Let's talk about closing the gap. Yes, Rutherford County does very well at Stewart's Creek Middle School and Blackman Middle School, but the achievement rates in North Rutherford County are half those of those outstanding schools. And respectfully, when we drilled down, and the ELS, ELL success rate is 11% at Laverne and 14% at Smyrna, and students with disabilities succeed at 7 and 11%. Provide options for parents. We took a survey recently of the students at Nashville Collegiate Prep, and we asked parents, does the school that you send your children to hold high expectations for your child? 92% of our parents, a recent survey, said yes. Would you recommend your school to a friend? 94% said yes. Is your child happy at the school? 95% said yes. Are you proud to be a parent at our school? 96% said yes. Parents respond to options, and not just for magnet schools. They respond to options that meet them where they are. Encouraging innovative teaching methods. What is the innovation? We've talked about it already, and there it is, the cycle of innovation. It goes through assessment, response, planning, and teaching. Yes, not every school should be the same, because not every kid is the same, not every family is the same. That is what the Tennessee Charter Act stands for. We have charter schools in Tennessee. Our legislature, Senator Ketchum, when he was there, Representative Sparks now, have said, we are to have charter schools. That is the policy of the state of Tennessee. But they should be excellent, and they should promote innovation. They should give students the chance to reach proficiency. And as we said, growth is not the same as proficiency. Every public school in Rutherford County has a T-VAAS score of five. What does that mean? That means that if you're here in the fifth grade and you move some measure forward, as long as that's as far as everybody else moves forward, great, you get a five. But if you're two grade levels behind and you move one grade level up with everybody else, you're still two grade levels behind at the end of the year, and the T-VAAS says nothing about that. The growth scores say nothing about that. And in schools where 80% of students are not proficient on state assessments, the T-VAAS score is in isolation, masks the failure to reach proficiency. So we want to create professional opportunities for teachers. Teacher proficiency is important. Teacher licensure is important. We have a shortage of licensed teachers in Tennessee, and so we've contracted with an organization that has been certified by the Tennessee Department of Education to provide new educator preparation. And then affording parents meaningful opportunities. We've heard from parents, we've heard from elected officials, they've asked for more time for questions to be answered. I wish, I agree with you, commissioners, I wish we had had that opportunity to engage in a dialogue with your elected officials at your school board, with their appointed We were never asked. Yes, you caught us in typos, but no, respectfully, you have not answered the question of why Rutherford Collegiate Prep. And the answer is simple. It's because this school meets state standards and because Rutherford parents and their students deserve a choice. Thank you for all of your time today.
Thank you very much. Before we conclude this hearing, I want to wrap up and share a couple of quick comments. First, we do encourage anyone who has remaining comments to submit those directly to the Charter Commission. You may do that today by handing those to our staff members or through the information on our agenda. As a reminder, comments must be received by December the 14th, 2021, at 2:00 PM Central Time to be considered in my recommendation. The commission will make a decision on this appeal at its meeting on January the 7th of 2022. This meeting is a special-called meeting. It will be held virtually, and it is, it will be open to the public. Details on the meeting, how to listen into the meeting, how to submit a public comment for that meeting will be available on the Charter Commission's website. I really appreciate everyone's time today in this matter. Thank you to Rutherford County for hosting us here in this courthouse. Appreciate the members of the public who commented today. And with no further business on the agenda, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.